There we go. Okay, are you ready? Give it a few seconds here. I don't see any. Okay, at 6:00 PM, we will call the County Board Regular 7/11/23 to order at this time. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a Much Silent.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call.
Seventeen or eighteen present, three absent.
I would seek a motion to approve the agenda.
Waiter makes a motion.
Okay, flater. Is there a second? Roommate seconds. Any discussion? Okay, to approve, push green. Disapprove, press red.
Motion passes eighteen zero.
Okay. Okay, agenda is approved. Members of the public wishing to be heard, I don't see any, so we will move on then to the consent agenda. And I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Tudor makes a motion.
Tudor makes a motion, is there a second?
Page down to second.
Dave, Joe.
Sure.
Okay, Bishop. Any discussion on consent agenda? Hearing none, then we will call the vote to approve, press green. Approve, press red. Oh.
Yep. Motion passes eighteen zero.
Okay, eighteen zero, motion passes. Reports, market analysis, compensation, Randy Schultz. True.
Thank you. Only thing I want to point out is this update on the letter, after all the appeals were done, if you look at the last page, you'll have the dollar amount for the tax credit is $1,593,855. That's after all the appeals were said and done. Boys, I'll have Tony come up and start.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Toni Hoefelder, Human Resources Director, and I'm going to give you a little presentation first, and then we have Heather Murray from Carlson Detman up in and go through this as well. So the first slide that we put together up here is just to give some definitions and history. And so first definition up there is a compensation study. The second definition is called market analysis. And so the difference between the two is a compensation study is a full comprehensive review of every position. And so, how do we have this happen? The compensation study is the comprehensive review. So our compensation consultants reviewed every position within the entire county. The last time that this occurred was in 2012 to 2013, and it went into effect on September 1st of 2013. This is the second time that we've done a full comprehensive compensation study. And the second definition is market analysis. A market analysis is part of a full compensation study. And so we just wanted to clarify because we used both terms. But what we've done is just the market analysis was done in January of 16, was it the effective date? January of 2018 and January of 20. And that's more of a, we already have the system in place, and what we're doing is we're just looking at the market and making tweaks within the market. And so again, what we did is we had a full comp study done in 2013. Then we did three market analysis where we tweaked it in 16, 18, and 20. We were also going to do one in 2022, but because of COVID, we decided to pause, and so that's why there was a four-year gap before doing another full compensation study with Carlson Detman. And so just wanted to clarify, when you hear market analysis, it's always part of both a comp study and market analysis, but that's the difference between the two. And I apologize, this is going to keep going and going every time for some reason. There must be a timestamp set into the PowerPoint that didn't get corrected. That's on my part. So here's the timeline for you. In May, and May of 9th and the 23rd, we met with the department heads. And Randy and I discussed what the final recommendations were by Carlson. On May 17th, we provided all employees an opportunity to look at that salary schedule and an update on the process, and I created a video for everybody to watch. On the May 22nd to May 26th, department heads and managers then sat down and explained to the employees what their effect of that salary schedule was on them personally. So they saw the salary schedule as a whole, then how was it going to affect them? May 26th is when the executive committee agenda went out for the June 6 meeting, which was for us to give an update, just like we're doing here today. June 5th is when all appeals were due. So once the announcement went out on the salary schedule, once the employees were told what their individual rates were, they had an opportunity to appeal where their placement was. Those were due on June 5th, so when we presented to executive committee, we didn't have enough time to update, so the very last slide today was not originally updated to the executive committee, and it's going to be updated here today on the appeals. And then, what will happen is June 6, which was the executive committee today, is we're bringing a report to you so that you can have the information ahead of time before the resolution will come forward to the County Board on August 8. That will include the final salary schedule, a resolution for adopting the market analysis for any salary schedule changes, as well as the across-the-board increase. All those fiscal decisions will come in a resolution in August. The final budget is approved in November, and then the effective date of any changes that are approved will be on January 1st of 2024. So that's the full timeline. A little summary for you on the appeal process. What is an appeal and what is not an appeal? And so what is an appeal is a review of the pay grade placement to which the job is assigned. It's a request to review the grade due to added responsibilities. So what we did is in fall of 2022, we asked for 2022, we asked for all employees and managers to make sure that we had all of the job descriptions updated. We always review those once a year during the performance review process, and we had them do that a little bit earlier this time so that we would have them ready. And so if there was a change to someone's job, since that information was gathered, we wanted to make sure that there was an opportunity for employees to be able to provide us those updates. And then the last, which is the most common, which is employees believe that their job evaluation by the consultant resulted in error and a great placement. What is not an appeal is a request to change due to the employee's superior performance. We have a lot of employees who are very strong performers, and so there are times when an appeal might have been put forward because of their strong performance, and we did have that happen a couple times. What else is not an appeal? A request to make a change due to internal equity, comparing yourselves to other employees. We went through a strong process, really evaluating internal equity, which we're going to talk about in a little bit. And so if somebody had an issue with where they were placed based on that, what our final decision was, that was one thing that we wouldn't be able to make a change due to the appeal process. And then a request due to high workload or temporarily assigned duties. Again, those are staffing decisions, those aren't salary scheduled decisions. And so this was an opportunity to recalibrate. And what we were able to do is we received 39 appeals. Twenty-nine of them were denied. Eleven requests were due to longevity, which was a prohibited appeal decision. Eighteen requests were due to job duties listed that were already evaluated during the process or a combination of other reasons, such as comparing to other people or on the schedule. Ten were approved, seven resulted in a pay change. Three, the grade changed, but it didn't necessarily change the pay of the incumbent in the position. Any questions on this before I turn it over to Heather to give more of a comprehensive and a study update?
Tony, can I ask you a question real quick? When the directors met with the individual employees and explained to them their pay adjustment.
Yes.
Essential, whatever. Were they, the employees given something in writing or a hard copy or something, or was that just a verbal conversation? Or were they directed to do that, or was it up to the director to decide how that was done?
So all employees were given a PowerPoint presentation that is also the same slide that Heather's going to show you that illustrated what the longevity change was. So if someone was here for two years, or excuse me, three years, for example, they get 3% above the starting. So all of those communications, but no, there wasn't a specific document that every employee received.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions? Heather?
Good evening, I'm Heather Murray with Carlson Detman Consulting. I was the senior consultant that worked on the project with Chippewa County. Here tonight to talk about kind of the key policy issues that we talked through as we were working through the project, internal consistency review, target market and market comparisons, and the review that took place throughout the project with regard to market, the pay structure, and then the administration component. So the first four essential policy questions that we really tried to hone in on early in the process is defining that target market. Who is like the organization? Who is similar, who is dissimilar, and we don't want to compare to from a market standpoint? I'll get into that a little bit in greater detail as we go through market placement, how competitive the organization wants to be within market. The design structure, so what type of pay plan does the organization prefer or want to continue with? Chippewa County has an open plan structure. We maintained that throughout this process. And then an implementation plan. So first, let's talk about job evaluation and what that is. So it's a formal systematic process for ordering a set of the organization's jobs. What it isn't is a performance evaluation. So we take out the individuals within a position. We look at the position, the position content, and we rate those into a hierarchy based on a value or worth of jobs within the organization. The goal is to provide equity across the organization for positions that are similar and/or dissimilar throughout the organization. So our job evaluation process takes into account five key factors. The first item that's looked at is thinking challenges and problem solving. So what is the required response to a problem? What is the complexity of the problem? What is the context that's really looked at by the position? And then moves into that decision-making. So with the problem, what autonomy does the position have in carrying out the decisions? What is the impact of the judgment or decisions that is made? And what level within the organization is that decision-making authority? Then we look at the interactions and communications. What types of communications does a position require? Who are they communicating with? What are the impacts of those communications? What effect does the communication have? Each position has its own unique work environment. Some are out on the roads, some are sitting in an office. We take a look at work environment and consider any potential hazards or physical requirements within a position. And then finally, the formal preparation, the education and experience of a position. So really, we're looking at the position as a whole in all five of those categories to evaluate them into a point system which creates a hierarchy. That hierarchy is what we call a grade order list. What was done, we made sure to do an internal consistency review. So we meet with department heads, we meet with the project team, we look at the grade order list and balance that throughout the organization, make sure that we've got the correct hierarchy, really tweak that. That's part of the appeals process, just making sure that all aspects have been considered. And then we do that external market review. So that's the market analysis that Tony was talking about. So we're comparing the position placement relative to market. So what is that target market and what is a benchmark? The marketplace is really looking at what market makes sense for a position and for the organization. So what we did was we developed a list of comparable organizations, cities and counties. And then we also looked at private sector data where it was relevant. There are positions that are unique to counties and to cities, and so finding private sector information can be a little challenging, and so it's not available. The other thing we look at is the type of position. So a department head position, you might look beyond just your local base, you might be looking statewide, nationally, or in some positions' cases, regionally or nationally, excuse me. Then you want to make sure you have a sufficient set of benchmark jobs, so jobs that are going to have those likely matches, unique jobs. You're not going to be able to find comparable information. And so making sure that you do have enough sufficient benchmark jobs, those that can be matched within the marketplace. They have fairly stable job content. Your administrative-type positions is an example. And then you want representation of different pay grades and responsibility levels. So we want to make sure that we have jobs from each pay level category throughout the organization. And then you want a mix of data sources to provide reliable and stable data. So the market comparables that were used, I'm not going to read the whole list, but we used a good mix of cities and counties when we were pulling comparable data. And then we also used CDC Custom Public Sector Survey to supplement that when needed. But from a private sector standpoint, we have access to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, comp data, pay factors, ERI, and Willis Towers Watsons. So we really make sure that we're pulling in that private sector information as well. Not all data sources were used for every job. Not every county has every position. Not every private sector has the same positions. So what we do is make sure that we have enough comparable organizations to make sure that it's a statistically sound analysis. So the number of benchmark positions, our goal is 50%. We were able to match 52% of the positions here at the county with 63% of the employees represented by one of the benchmark positions. So we're happy with the number of benchmark positions that we were able to match within the market. Our overall market index was 93% of the median market. So that means that within 93% of the positions are within that median market. But there was a variance of 73% to 128%. That means you have some that were below market, some that were above market. What this doesn't mean is that there's a whole bunch of people that are underpaid or a whole lot of people that are overpaid, just means there's a variance. It could simply be the position is above or below market, tenure, and new hire placement can play a factor in that as well. So your new hires are likely going to be below market. Market placement is a big discussion. What this is, is where you want to be in the market. Do you want to be a leader? Do you want to lag the market? Or do you want to be right at market, that 50th percentile? It is a big discussion, especially now in today's economy, about whether you want to be a leader. Very rarely do we hear anybody say they want to lag. That's why I'm here. But ultimately, the decision was to be at that 50th percentile. Everybody can still hear me, right? Okay. So what we do want to, because we only are able to use benchmark positions and a select number of positions that are able to be matched within the market, we use what's called an R squared. So with the R squared, we're looking for a high correlation coefficient. And what that tells us is the variance in pay from one benchmark job to the next can be explained by the job evaluation system. So a high R squared, the .94, allows us to feel confident in the grade placement of those that aren't benchmark jobs. This is a graphic of where the county is relative to market. So the current market, linear market line is that light gray. So the county is lagging slightly behind market, which is that darker line there. So factors that we considered in the design and the implementation, employees, how does this affect me? How do I get a pay raise? A lot of discussion was had around this and what is the appropriate implementation strategy? What's fair to the employees? From an employer's perspective, you have to balance that out, what the financial pressures are, what the limitations are. And then from a policy standpoint, as you move forward, what is best for the organization? What is the readiness and the commitment? And then how can the plan be implemented? Factoring all of those in. Ultimately, as I mentioned, the county elected to stick with the asymmetrical pay structure with an open range. So what that means, and I'm just going to advance here. So there's a shorter spread. If you look at the yellow line, your lower compensated positions, there's a shorter spread from the minimum up to that midpoint, or it's actually called a control point. And the idea there, and then it gets wider as you get into your upper-level positions. And the idea there is, if you think about how long it takes someone to be trained coming into the position, and secondarily, those positions that we're really trying to recruit for right now, people don't want to wait five, eight years at that entry-level-type position to get to that control point. So it's a recruitment and a retention strategy. And it does take a little bit longer as you progress in position hierarchy to really learn and feel comfortable in a position. So it takes a little bit longer then to reach that midpoint. We did leave the range then, once you hit that control point, up to the maximum of the pay structure even, throughout the whole structure. I apparently jumped ahead. So the goal is to get lower-level positions to market more quickly because of that shorter training period, and then the recruitment and retention strategy with the newly hired employees. So now we are going to talk about implementation and turn it back over to Tony. Much of the work.
All right. So we, like Heather said, spent a lot of time in this area once the schedule was put together, talking about how do we apply this to current employees? When the county first implemented the very first comp study, or sorry, the second, or the first market analysis after the comp study that we did in 2018, sorry, 2016, the only implementation that we did was that anybody who, if they got moved within the grid, they had to be at least at starting. So if a social worker, for example, or a highway operator position moved from grade L to grade N, as long as those incumbents were still within that new grade, they didn't see an increase. So they only moved if they weren't at starting. And that occurred in 2016. In 2018, we did the same thing. It was only if they couldn't, if they were not at starting. In 2018, what we started to see by using that strategy is you start to see a lot of compression, especially within somebody who's just started all the way up to three to four years. And so we started to compress our employees who had been here for a long time. They weren't seeing those increases, but then somebody, a new employee, would start, and then there would be that compression. And so in 2020, we started to make some changes. Lori Spiegelhoff, our finance director, and Randy and I spent a lot of time trying to figure out what we could afford. This proposal here is more than what we did last time because we were still having compression even with that previous issue. And so what we did is, Finance put together, Lori put together this great spreadsheet that had all of our employee names. And what we did is we moved those percentages, and then at the total, we'd be able to see the total. So this took us quite a bit of time to look at, are we going to do an across-the-board increase? Can we do these incremental increases based on longevity within a certain position? And what was the total fiscal impact of those decisions? And so these are basically the final decisions that we could afford within the budget. So the first one is all employees not at minimum or starting will be moved to minimum or starting. So there are circumstances where someone might have gotten a 20% increase because their position moved so dramatically up the schedule that their wage actually moved subsequently. And so at a minimum, everyone moved to starting. Then what we did is we looked at years of service. And so if someone was here for two years, you'll see the 2A through D, two years, three years, four years, or five years. If they needed to be at least 2%, 3%, 4%, or 5% above starting. So if someone's grade moved from L to N, and they had been here for three years, they had to be at least 3% above that new end starting wage. And if they were not, then that's where they moved. So this is what we tried to illustrate in the video, and we showed this slide, that that's essentially what would happen to employees who have been here for a long time. Number three then is all employees with six years or more experience with the county will move to the control point. So that's the control point, the 50th percentile that Heather was referring to on that previous slide. And so what that means is we're going to have employees who have been here for eight, 10, 20 years, who are most likely already above the control point, even if their grade moves significantly, and they're not going to see an increase. So we had approximately 80 employees of our almost 400 that didn't have an increase in pay because they've been here for so long that even with the change in salary schedule, they didn't see an increase. We looked at what that could look like if we wanted to just give everybody a 2% increase. What that would mean is we'd have to reduce some of those options, and number two, therefore create more compression issues. So these are really difficult, hard decisions to have, but these is ultimately working with the consultant, and not just Heather, but her other staff within her team trying to, with these recommendations. And then the last item on there is if an employee was promoted within the last six years, the new position start date was used and applied to those factors above. And so those promotions or pay changes. There were other circumstances that we talked through with those as well. Any questions on these? Yes.
Can I, I'm going to make a clarification statement just so I make sure I'm on the same page.
Yes.
Just my, so the study that was placed before showing the graph, the reason that there is more incremental compressed, thank you, compressed pay increases is because now with our current market and workforce, you want to retain employees more, and so we're giving more frequent pay increases to people that, who have just started to get them up to a higher salary, better salary, to retain employees? Is that what I'm?
So like, for example, in July 1st, everybody received a 3% increase. Next July, the request during the resolution will be a 3% increase. So if you're at a lower, if you're in the grades 1 through 4, you're going to start closer to the market, and so that 3% increase is going to get you to the market or your control point faster than somebody who is maybe on grade 25. They're going to start further away in theory if they don't have experience in the position, but their wage is higher. And so there's two things going on. One, they're going to take a little bit longer because they're further away, but their wage is higher, so they should, they'll move a little bit faster if we had everything equal. The people on the higher end were going to move to market quite quickly because of the percentage.
Okay.
So there's two reasons to have an asymmetrical, and that's one of them.
Okay, so the lesser-tenured employees are receiving a significant increase, and the players who are in that middle may already be at market per the study, and so they would receive no increase.
Correct. So then, so, right. So somebody who's been here more than six years, if their grade didn't move a significant amount, then they might already be above control point of the new.
And that's, you said, 80 employees?
About 80 employees, yes.
And those are people who have more seniority or tenure, which is newer people who are getting bumped up to the market?
Right.
Thank you.
Surprise.
I'm clicking. It's by raising. We had talked before about this, about the higher pay rates, 3%, lower pay rates, 3%, there's a big difference. You were really adamant about, like I was about, why are we growing so much more? Now, where, where in that plan that you have so far is to make it more valid for the more people?
So that's what this asymmetrical solves, that issue that you and I talked about in exact, that you're talking about, how somebody who is, who makes 10 about in exact, is that you're talking about how somebody who is, who makes $10 an hour, just for easy math, in 3%, versus somebody who's making $50 an hour, 3%, they're gonna move faster because they're making more, more of a wage. And so having an asymmetrical helps, helps make that fair, fairer. So that's, they're starting lower than somebody who is making, who's at grade one or grade two.
Well, a $50 an hour person is starting?
Lower than their control point, which is market. So they're not starting at market unless they have experience. Because there's definitely some flexibility with the policy that we have of somebody who can start anywhere between starting and market, depending on their experience and what they come to the county with. Other questions? I believe, that's the last slide of this part. So it's really open for anything from Heather and I, or Randy. You're good?
Okay. Move on to Department Reports, Regional Wellness Consortium.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna start this off, and then Paul and Jessica are gonna, gonna wrap things up here. So I'm gonna start off with background and purpose. In about 2013, legislation was passed by the Walker administration, which allowed for full funding of comprehensive community services, CCS, if delivered in a consortium model. This isn't a new program. This has been around the state for many years, but prior to 2015, when it became operational, our legislation was enacted, it was a typical 60-40 program, Medicaid program, where the county paid 40% of the cost, and the federal share was 60% of that cost. So after 2000, the legislation was passed, what that meant is it was fully funded. The state paid both the federal share, 60%, and the 40% county share. We're gonna get into a little more detail into that. Paul will explain exactly what that means. So we've been knocking this idea around for probably a year or so. Larry Winter, my predecessor, came from La Crosse County, and he was familiar with the CCS program where they had it. And again, that was a traditional 60-40 split at that time. So we were involved with probably about 14, 15 counties at that time. Eau Claire was involved, St. Croix was involved, and we all ultimately ended up with, with nine counties that became known as the RWC Consortium, which at that time was the WRRW C, Western Region Recovery and Wellness Consortium, which if we would have left it at that name, would have cleared up the difference between the RWC County and the RWC Consortium. But not having, having looked that far in advance, we did change it to the RWC. So we became the lead agency. CHIPW, what that, what that involves is billing for Medicaid for all CCS and all those expenses. So the whole purpose of this is just to provide an update, and to just let you know where the money, the revenues coming from, what the expenses are, and what our ask is gonna be for 2024 for fully funded positions. So who's Paul Brenner? He's our fiscal manager, and he'll be tackling the next piece.
Yep, there's the partner counties. CHIPW is, we're a participant, obviously. Our citizens receive the service, and we are the lead agency, and those are the partner counties. I'm gonna kinda start with the very highest numbers, and I'll drill down into some of the details as I go along. If you have any questions as we go, just go ahead and ask at any time, and then we'll, I'll take questions at the end. We're the, as the lead agency, we provide services to ourselves and to these other counties. We pay the, we, we have providers, the, the social workers at the counties are what we do, provide what we call service facilitation. They manage the cases for the clients, make the plan. What is the plan for this person gonna be? What kind of services do they need? Check-ins along the way on how it's going and so forth. Then the services that the clients get are actually provided by contracted providers. So CHIPW's role is to maintain a base of contracted providers, reach agreements on price. The lead agency, we bill Medicaid. This is a Medicaid program, as Tim mentioned, so we bill for all nine counties here at CHIPW. And so the lead agency expenses, is that type of administration done here at CHIPW, the expenses for that, and we, we as a partner, we use those lead agency expenses also. Lead agency expenses, this is our 2023, $13,963,254 is our budget for 2023. And I'm gonna round the numbers going forward, so they're easier to say and easier to listen to. 13.9 are, is our lead agency expenses for the year. And then we provide $5.8 million worth of service to residents of Chippewa County, children and adults. And that, that 5.8 is county staff and contracted services, as I mentioned. And then we avail ourselves of the lead agency services. Also, we use some of the 13.9. So if you add those two together, our 2023 budget is 19.9 million, 19.8, 19.9. Breaking that down a little bit, I mentioned there's contracted providers. So out of the lead agency expenses, out of the 13.9 million, paying the contracted providers for the services, everybody in the group, 12 million, 12.1 million. The staff here at the lead agents, at the, at CHIPW, myself, a big part of myself, the fiscal staff, we have a couple IT people that support the program. Jessica, who's gonna speak next, is fully funded by the program. So we have a million, 1.1 million in staff costs here at CHIPW. Quality Assurance Services, it's a contract with Aurora Community Services. What that is, is we're dispensing a lot of Medicaid dollars. We're subject to audit by Medicaid, which they do from time to time, in, in order to, when you disperse Medicaid funds, when they come into the audit, is everybody certified? Is everybody trained? Or all your, is everything in order? Are all your providers being dealt with properly? And if, and we need to make sure that happens, or if not, Medicaid can start recouping money from us, and we don't want that to happen. So we have this outside group that provides quality assurance services to. Electronic health record, it's a quarter of a million dollars, similar to what your doctor's office was have, you know, the old paper charts, you know, with the colored tabs on the end went away, and now everything heads down on the computer. That's a, an electronic health record that does our billing. It monitors all our case notes, and it's, it's the, the computer system of the consortium. Other expenses, 36,000. Most of that's training. So those are the lead agency expenses, 13.9 million. Indirect costs. When we ask for these, as we've asked for these positions over time, we've said they're fully funded. Tim said it's 60% federal, 40% state, and it's fully funded. Doesn't cost tax levy. What do we mean by that? What do we mean when it's fully funded? The, the human services in every department at the county, human services, we get a lot of, we receive services from the county that we don't pay for. We don't pay rent. We don't pay the light bill. The treasurer disperses funds when we pay bills, and they take our deposits to the bank for us when we bring in money. We don't pay for any of that directly. The county pays for it. There's a thing called the indirect cost plan, if you see on the first thing right there. An outside accounting firm comes in every year, and this has gone on, it wasn't unique to this, we've always had this. An outside accounting firm comes in, they look at all these departments, facilities, the people that, the people that provide the building, IT, the treasury, information technology, the things the county pays for. This person says, well, how much of those are attributable to DHS, to every other highway department, everybody else, the law enforcement? And so they are splitting up those costs that don't appear on the DHS budget, but the county pays for. And the indirect costs that they attribute to CCS, us being the lead agency, is $217,000 was the plan for this year, for 2023. And so when we bill Medicaid, we include that amount. And that's kind of what dots the I and crosses the T on it's fully funded. It's paying for what's on the, in the DHS part budget, but also this amount of money dispersed by the county is also covered under the program, indirect costs. Out of 217,000 in indirect costs, about half of that, and this is an egg that's, you know, pretty well scrambled, but about half of that is attributable to us being the lead agency. If we were just a partner, we'd still have a sizable chunk of indirect costs to go get, but 100,000 of that is attributable to us to get to being the lead agency. So, so there's that. And then also throughout the year, as we, for Corporation Council, IT, the county administrator, sometimes we have little projects that go on where they're doing some work related to us being the consortium lead, and they keep track of their time, and we throw that in the pool for reimbursement also. That, this is actually last year's number, because we're still in this year, but it was about $11,000 last year we went and got, because it was attributable to this program. What's next? So that's all, that's always, that's the expenses I've been talking about. The revenue, 19.5 million, that's, our budget is budgeted to be in balance. Our expenses were 19.5 million. Our revenue, budgeted at 19.9 million, 19.8 million, really. How we get that? I mentioned billing Medicaid fee for service. That's every time a consumer in Chippewa County or any of the nine partners is seen by a provider, or seen by one of our people, we, we bill Medicaid, just like a doctor office would. And we're going, we're, we're estimating we'll do about 93,000 claims this year, and we'll bring in 14.9 million doing that. About 17, 75% of the costs are being paid as we bill Medicaid throughout the year. Remainder of the costs, we have what's called reconciliation. For 2023, in the summer of 2024, we have a reconciliation process where we report to DHS every dollar we spent the year before. They do a big analysis. It takes us all summer to do. It's a lot of work. It's monkeying around, but we report all our costs in. And what they do there then is they pay our costs that were in excess of the pay, of the claim payments. So we'll get 14.9 million as we go. We'll get 5 million. As you can see, it's, it's a year, it's, you know, a year later, but DHS, that creates a cash problem, obviously, one, wait a year and a half to get paid. But we addressed that with DHS several years ago, and they stepped up on that, and I'll show you that next. We don't have to wait that long for that last 5 million. So here's the funding. I'm kind of repetitious just to kind of set the bearings, but 19.9 million is the revenue. We get the 75% in 60 to 75 days, in a rears throughout the year as we bill it, and as the Medicaid pays it. So we'll get 14.9 throughout the year. At the beginning of the year, Medicaid, DHS, we can ask for an advance against that reconciliation. So that 4.9 million, early this year, we requested 4.5 million in advance for that. The money's here, and so that takes care of the cash flow for that piece of it. We're not waiting a year and a half for the money. We have working capital held by the lead agents. What that is, is we ask the partners, even in the normal course of business, there's always that 30, 60-day lag in getting payments billed, money out to providers. You know, you, you need some skin in this game, too. So the nine counties, the other eight counties has money on deposit here at the county on our balance sheet to help fund those day-to-day activities. So we have, if you, we have sufficient capital to run this. It's not being run on Chippewa County Bank account. What's next? Consumers serve. This is, we're down to kind of the operational side now. Any questions on any of that?
Can I back you up just a, a little bit? Can you share with all of us, what are some of these specific services that are offered by this consortium? What specifically are we, people in these counties?
Yeah, I'll let Jessica take that one.
So my name is Jessica Barrickman. I'm the Operations Administrator for the Recovery and Wellness Consortium. So CCS, Comprehensive Community Services, is a mental health and substance use program. So as Tim was talking earlier, the lead county does the administrative piece, fiscal billing contract. Counties, the nine counties, have social workers that are providing service facilitation. So they are helping to coordinate plans, coordinate and connect people with services. And then we contract with 120-some agencies in the community that are providing mental health services, such as addiction treatment, psychotherapy, certified peer support, medication management, physical health monitoring. So all these different things that play into someone's mental health and substance use needs. So there's 120, like 123-ish agencies throughout our community that are all providing these types of services.
So the county is connecting people with these needs to private providers?
Yes.
So the county has no providers themselves, obviously. They're just facilitating a, someone with a need with a, with another person, or with another entity, too?
For the most part, yeah. The service facilitator does more than just like connect person A with service B. They're helping to help do a bit of case management as well, if you will. And some of our counties, not to get too complicated, but some of our counties, for example, Polk County has a clinic. Chippewa County used to, but we don't anymore. So Polk County that has their own mental health clinic, they provide services directly.
The county has one. Chippewa County does not. We're, in this county specifically, we're just connecting people with other private providers to provide these services, and then doing some case management. I'm assuming these are all social workers in these positions doing the work?
Yeah, correct. Any other questions on the financial piece that Paul went over?
On, on slide number five there, is it, is it 750 people or 730, that you mean?
Oh, is that the next, okay.
Right there. Is that figure in the lower left-hand, 730, is that the total number of people served throughout all the counties?
Yes. And the color, they're all different kind of shades of purple. It's hard to tell. But the, the dark, the darkest one that's on the top, that's Chippewa County. So you can see Chippewa County holds a good percentage of the individuals, but all the other shades are broken down by individual counties. But yes, in 2022, our total was 730 individuals. We're looking at 2024 probably hitting close to 800 individuals that we're serving. So as I go through kind of our growth and where we're at and needs, I just wanna talk a little bit about the program itself just for a minute, because the question has been throughout the state. This is not a question just to Chippewa County or our region, is when is CCS gonna stop growing, right? It's like, there's more people. We keep coming back and saying, there's more, there's more. The beauty of CCS is that it's a holistic program. So before CCS existed, if you were receiving Medicaid, the only mental health service you really had access to was psychotherapy, which there's nothing wrong with therapy. We, we provide therapy, lots of people have therapy, and some traditional substance use treatments. Those were your options. And those are great options, but they don't work for everyone. The folks that we serve within CCS have pretty substantial needs. To even be in the program, you have to have your daily living affected. To even be in the program, you have to have your daily living affected to a certain point that you're even eligible for the program. So folks coming into this program have pretty high-level needs. The beauty of CCS is for the first time really ever in our state, people are able to access a more holistic service. So you had asked earlier what types of services. Mental health isn't just about therapy and trauma. It's about managing addiction. It's about managing coping skills. It's about managing, if I need to take medication every day to manage my mental health, but I can't manage my medication, where does my mental health go, right? So CCS allows all these different types of providers to come in to really help create recovery sustainability so that people's recovery is long-term. It's keeping people out of crisis situations, out of hospitalizations. Not that it doesn't ever happen because it still does, but it, there's a significant reduction in those long-term cases. Not only is there financial impact to that on the county, these expensive placements, but no one wants to experience crisis. If you or yourself or anyone you know have experienced a crisis, it's not a place any one of us want to be in. So as we look at CCS, our growth has increased. The program's working. People are talking about it, and people are wanting to get help through this program, which isn't always the case because we're able to look at people as individuals and realize that 50-minute therapy might be part of their plan, but it's not the only answer to help people have sustainable recovery. So just to give you kind of some of that backdrop of, you know, why has this particular program grown so much? I truly believe it's because we're able to offer such an individualized service for folks that fits their needs and where they're at.
Supervisor Steele, you had a question?
Yeah, it's more for the county. I know it's fully funded for the employees. Are they considered employees of the consortium, or are they considered employees of Chippewa County?
Of the county.
Okay. Now that we've went to self-health insurance and all that kind of stuff, what do we do about that?
The wages and salary and fringe benefits and so forth are in that 19.8 million. The full cost of the employee is their wages, salary, benefits are in that cost?
I understand. But we're now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I can't turn around. We got rid of our insurance, and we're insuring ourselves with a stock app up above. So now they're employees. They pay all their fringe benefits, and everything's paid for, but what happens when they go out on sick leave and we start having to pay them or, God forbid, a work comp or something like that?
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are you talking about Chippewa County employees? Or are you talking about all of our, like, providers and such?
No, no. Just people.
Yeah, so the consortium that we're, as the financial gurus of the consortium, they are Chippewa County employees. So yeah, if they're out on sick leave, that's PTO, that's covered through the fringe benefits. If they're out on work comp, it'd be part of the, I don't know how work comp's calculated, I guess. The percentage of whatever we charge the work comp would go through RWC.
Actually, what happens is that...
Come up, Lori, if you want to.
Every employee, that's part of our benefit package for employees. Every employee, for any part of their wages, there's 3.5% of an employee's wages is put to the workers' comp fund because it's a self-funded fund. So that, you know, whether you have an RWC, first and non-workers comp, or even finance, it doesn't matter what department you're in, everybody's paying 3.5%, including the county board members. Not your, yourself aren't paying, but the county is paying it as a fringe benefit.
Is that 3.5% charged back to RWC?
Yes. Yep.
So then the health insurance, it'd just be part of our plan. If they had a surgery, whatever, they'd, copays and deductible and all that, just like any other.
Supervisor Mueller, you had a question?
Yes, this one maybe has to do with, can you give some idea as to, I was looking at the consumers' numbers that are increasing. Do you have some idea as to what the percentages might be that, you know, some of these are probably new folks, some of them may be people that have been in it for a number of years? Are those all included in the same numbers each year? Or is there some differentiation?
Yeah, so when you look at like consumers' serve, there's a number of different ways to break it down. How this is broken down is point in time, end of year. So at the end of 2022, there were 730 individuals that were being served. So consistently down, same with 2015. At the end of the year, we had 117. There's a lot of different ways to slice that pie of how to do the math of it. Is it collective throughout the year? Is it point in time? But this particular slide is point in time. We have the ability to break it down per cent, but I don't have that here.
Supervisor Tootaburger.
Thank you, Chair. So 19 million total for the program, and that's for all the counties that are in this consortium, correct?
The contracted services.
Contracted services.
They pay their own social workers and so forth.
Correct.
It's all Chippewa people that touch it in any way, and then all the contracted services for all the...
And I'll guess I'll clarify a little further. We're anticipating potentially in 2023, 800 people roughly, maybe, if the trend continues to be served?
Yes.
Yes. By my math, that's just shy of $24,000 per person. Does that seem a little high? Or is my math wrong with this?
I don't think that seems, for the contracted services, 24,000, if that's the math that it breaks down to.
Okay. Is there, maybe I'm missing a statutory requirement or some type of element, is there a reason that the county is playing, I guess for lack of a better term, middleman in trying to connect these persons versus them receiving help through, or help through a family member or a doctor or a referral or something like that? This seems like an awful expensive program, albeit I understand that it's not cost to the county, quote-unquote, however, it is cost to the taxpayer, and everyone in the county pays taxes.
So I think when you think about CCS, again, going back to the individuals that we're serving have more complex needs than, say, someone coming in with like a low-level anxiety disorder or situational depression where they have the ability to connect themselves to different services. So when people come in for a referral, the first thing we're doing is assessing where their need is at. And some folks that come in, we're referring them to straight outpatient mental health therapy, and we don't get involved at all. Others, that their level of need is more significant, that intent for a social worker to help really play that facilitation role is really critical. A big part of what CCS is that's different than straight community mental health services where you may call a therapist and see someone, is we're having frequent recovery team meetings. We're bringing everyone that's together, their natural supports, their teachers, if they're a child, if they have a partner or a sibling or a neighbor that's close, we're bringing those folks in to really help wrap around that individual. So not everyone in their recovery team is a paid professional. So the big part of CCS is this team-based, where we're coming together every two, three, four months and talking about how are things going because the folks in the program need that level of services versus being able to kind of self-direct more independently.
You also asked me if this is a mandated service?
Correct.
Yeah. So one way or the other, we're going to take care of these individuals. They're either going to get therapy and get services, or they're going to end up in high place costs.
So the county is mandated statutory to provide these services?
Yeah, and that's why we got the letter, this is why we got the letter with the waiting list, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So I don't, you guys remember that, but we got a letter, couple of them, even, I don't know if they went as far as a...
Citation.
Citation, I think, yeah. So, yeah, you're not allowed to have a waiting list, and that's why we've been proactive in having positions available so we can fill them right away, and the county board has allowed us to do that in the last couple of years.
And I would also say that, I don't know if you're familiar with the term healthcare literacy. What that means is the knowledge of how to navigate the healthcare system. It's typically pretty low for a lot of individuals, and these are individuals also that are on Medicaid. Typically, they do not have the education. They do not have the resources to do a lot of this research themselves. So what we find is that there's healthcare navigators that are helping individuals navigate the healthcare. And if you think the healthcare system is difficult to navigate, the mental health system is much more difficult to navigate. And so that's kind of what some of those costs are, too, is helping individuals navigate that system. People don't know what they don't know. People don't even know half these services exist for them. And so, and what this is doing is we're either, we're going to pay one way or the other. It's going to be with tax levy in very costly placements, or we can do what we can with Medicaid to try and keep people out of placements as much as possible. We're going to pay one way or the other typically. And do we end up, do we have people in CCS that still end up in placements and kids? Yeah, occasionally. But what we had was that PowerPoint, it was a year or two ago, they talked about the cost savings that we saved on placements by having CCS. It was millions.
Still a question. I'll just say one more thing, and I don't know if it was a big diagram designer, we just stumbled into it. But Medicaid sets a price that they reimburse providers for anything, you know, dentistry, medical services, this type of thing. And if you think of, how much money did you get from Medicaid? 75%. So if they said, oh, we don't need the counties, we'll just take your Medicaid card and find a provider on your own, you know, medic providers, you know, don't limit how many Medicaid patients, some don't take any, they limit access and so forth. And so what we get is that reconciliation, that other 25% gets paid later, and that's why we can afford to offer these services, where a standalone mental health place might very well turn up their nose at providing services like this. So I think that's kind of how, how we kind of landed here, why there's a big rush to the county, these services weren't out there.
Supervisor Schmidt?
As I understood your presentation, the numbers up here are a point in time since the end of the year, how many people you've served at that particular day of the year, correct? Or is that for the year, how many people you've served all year?
It's point in time.
That's how many were...
Currently serving are open accounts.
How many open accounts at that point?
So are these, a majority of these accounts open for a year or six months or three months? You can't really take that number and divide it into the total cost because there's people that fall through the cracks that, in all of the system, I'm assuming?
If they came in in January, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, if someone onboarded in January and left in July, they'd never hit that, that number.
And is that a fair percentage or a small percentage?
I think it's just a different way of calculating it, which we have that number. This particular slide is point in time. So one of your questions was, how long is someone generally in the program? There's not any mandate around that, so it really is individualized. But I would say it's pretty typical for someone to be in the program three years, two, three years. Some folks are more, some folks are less. Generally, if someone's less, it's because either they discharged unsuccessfully, because not a lot of folks come in and are able to meet all their goals in less than a year with this level of program. So typical is probably two, three years that someone's in the program.
Okay.
Children are typically on much longer than adults.
That's all we see. Children are typically on a lot of times until they're 18.
Supervisor Tootaburger?
Thank you, Chair. Is there a benefit to being the lead agency in this?
You know, I think that's been a million-dollar question from the beginning, and I think the benefit, and this is coming from the social worker in me, right? There might be a fiscal answer that's different, but the next slide that we have is, we have 123 contracted agencies. As a lead county, we've been able to cultivate these agencies. When we started this in 2015, there were not 120 agencies even in our region. So having the ability to be successful in the lead county as a larger, one of the largest, not the largest of the nine counties, we've been able to develop different, new programs, new systems within place. That's the social worker.
Yeah. I would say, and I've been part of a lot of consortiums here and in Lincoln County. Lincoln County were never a lead agent because we weren't big enough. So typically, the biggest county in the consortium becomes the lead agent because there's resources available. It's been difficult. I mean, the growing pains, nobody knew what this program was going to look like when they implemented it years ago. So there's definitely been growing pains. One of the positions we're looking at for fiscal is to help offset some of our central finance crunches that are coming. You'll see the amount of invoice, I can't even remember what they are, like 20,000 or something. So, yeah, it's difficult for the main core staff. There's more work for us, for sure.
Let me ask a different question to kind of get to the point, which I think I already know the answer. Would we have as much benefit in this county for our citizens of Chippewa County? Would they receive as much benefit in this program if Chippewa County was not the lead agency?
I don't know how they answer that one, to be honest with you. I know in Lincoln County, because we're so close to Marathon County, if you're close to a big, that's where all the services were. So as a smaller county, if we didn't have that, we wouldn't be able to provide the services at all. We weren't, we weren't providing this much service on our own, so there's got to be services in other counties, I assume, that are helping our citizens, too. I don't know how that all works, but yeah, so, yeah, that's a difficult question.
Continue.
Okay. So this is a general growth summary, lots of numbers on there, but it's really showing in one slide kind of where our growth has been. Consumers, we're looking at our service facilitation. Currently, we're at 49. We're looking at a total of 69 by 2024. Our fiscal FTE is currently 7.31, and part of our ask for 2024 is three additional fiscal staff. Contracted providers, we currently have about 130, anticipate with trends that we'd be at 140. Provider invoices, in 2023, we're processing 21,000 invoices is what's projected for the end of the year, and at the next year is 24,000. So this is what Randy is talking about, the fiscal impact is probably the biggest as the lead county, and needing to make sure that we're maintaining staffing levels to be able to manage increasing consumers and services. We're also projected for overall provider billing, so this is again, as the contracted services, is 23 million for 2024. Earlier in the fiscal presentation, Paul had talked about our quality assurance contract. So those are the folks making sure that we're doing what we need to do to bill Medicaid and not have to pay back later. And we're currently at about a seven FTE contract with Aurora Services to help make sure that we're on track with that. So as we look at where we're at right now, as Tim was saying, we started CCS in this region, 2014, really launched in 2015. When you think about the number of growth, so that's eight years, eight years and like the length of a county program isn't very long, right? We've got crisis and CSP that have been around for decades. So we're at the point really now where we really want to take a step back. We've been doing quality assurance, quality improvements every year along the way, but really take a big step back and look at how are we doing things, where are capacity needs, and making sure that we're setting up the system as best as we possibly can with a fresh set of eyes. So in 2022 and 23, we really looked at a system assessment, and we took two very different approaches to it. One was the service delivery side, which all nine counties were involved in, providers were involved in, people with lived experience, really looking at, through the lens of a consumer, what does service delivery look like? We're not going to get into the details of that today, but that was a significant part of our endeavor that is worth noting, in that actually we received a statewide award for the work that we did in that system assessment. The secondary assessment piece that we did was really around infrastructure. So we looked at our fiscal, our quality assurance, IT, clinical, which means like our therapeutic support, and then general lead county administration. And we looked at all of our different processes, how we bill, how we contract. Just because we did it this way yesterday doesn't mean it's going to be the most efficient. And we talked about big hairy audacious ideas of how do talked about big hairy audacious ideas of how do we make sure that we're not looking through the same lens that we've been looking through to really try and create a sustainable system as we're growing. So we've now completed that assessment, and the results of the assessment are outlined in this. Really, there were 101 different process things that we identified that were small little process that we could do differently to be as efficient as possible. Those aren't outlined in what we're presenting really here for you are the ones that have fiscal impact. So our ask for 2024, our five positions for the lead county infrastructure. Two of those are account assistants. So those are folks that will be processing billing, accounts payable, and one accountant. With the two account assistants, what we're looking at is the request to hire one immediately for the first of the 2024 year, and then the second kind of as needed, like let's see how this goes, and then hire mid-year when we're ready to do that as the need arises. Then we're looking at, and this was part of our assessment of, okay, how have we done things before, and how can we do them more efficiently moving forward? Currently, we have an accountant that does 50% billing and 50% contracts. So she's working with our 120 providers to get their contracts, new ones established and renewed every year. Those are two very different jobs, right? Billing and contracts, very different. So one of the things that we looked at is, when we look at recovery sustainability, so people being able to like maintain their recovery, minimize placement, a key part of that is having new providers coming on that are ready and really understand CCS, are well-trained right up front. And that's not the role of an accountant, right, to be doing that onboarding. So what we're looking for that position is that individual will be doing 100% accounting, and then that 50% of the contracts would shift over to a contract relation position that will do that like tangible contract piece and also give them time to really help properly onboard new providers coming on so that they're like ready to go right out of the gate and providing services as they align with CCS. That's one of the things we identified as a growth need to better support our providers. The fifth position is the addition of an administrative assistant. That really is looking at all of the tasks that myself, our clinical, our lead social worker, our IT folks, what are the jobs, the tasks, the daily things that could be done by an administrative assistant so that we're not hiring another clinical at this point or another person like me to help alleviate some of those day-to-day tasks? So that's the administrative assistant position that we're looking at for the lead county. Any questions on growth that I talked about or what the request is for 2024?
Thank you. All righty. We'll move to business items. So versus Resolution 2623, I would seek a motion to approve. She reads it.
Resolution 26-23, resolution to authorize additional American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funding for county parks improvement projects. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby approve the use of an additional $91,300 of the American Rescue Plan Act funding to the Facilities and Parks Division for the Pine Point Bathroom and the Otter Lake Bathroom Shower Improvement Projects from 2023 to 2024. And be it further resolved that these funds be transferred from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, Fund 235, to the County Parks Capital Improvement Account, 100-51-55201, on at least an annual basis and upon completion of the parks improvement projects. And be it further resolved that by March of 2024, any ARPA funds allocated to a project that is not expected to be completed within the allotted timeframe may be redirected to other projects as approved by separate resolution brought by the county administrator to the executive committee and county board for approval to determine how those funds will be allocated, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Looking. Peterson, is there a second?
Please, Mr. Boomer.
Boomer seconds. Discussion.
As Larry's making his way up here, I'll just say that part of this money, this additional money would come from the contingency that was left in ARPA. Remember, we talked about this, that we were doing projects, you can never know exactly what those costs are going to come in. So if you approve this moving forward, there'd still be about $182,000 left in that contingency for ARPA.
Good evening. I'm Larry Ritzinger, Director of Facilities and Parks. And again, I'm here tonight requesting some additional funding for the two bathroom projects that we bid out. So just to kind of cap what we did, we bid out the Pine Point Bathroom Project, and we only had one bidder on that project. And the bid came in at $175,000, and we had $150,000 approved. And there's a few extra costs to complete that project. So at the end of the day, the Pine Point Project will be about $39,300 over budget. That's one. The second bathroom project is the Pine Point Bathroom Project. So we had $150,000 approved for that. I'm sorry, I'm getting these mixed up, I believe. Yep. The Otter Lake, let's go back to Otter Lake. Otter Lake Bathroom Project, we had $325,000 approved for that one. And with that one, we had six bids that came in, and they ranged from 302,000 to 404,000. But when we had the extra costs, there's some residual costs that add into that, it's going to come in at about $52,000 over budget on that one. Pine Point was the $150,000 project that was approved, and that one came in at $175,000. And that one was going to be $39,300 over budget when all said and done. So that's the request.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, we will call the vote. Those in favor, ready? Those in favor, press your green button. Disapprove.
Ready? Motion passes, 18 yes, zero no.
Business item number two, amend 202126 ARPA plan?
Yeah, so this is, I'm sorry.
Motion?
Sorry.
Okay.
I jumped the gun.
We're trying to hurry.
I'm sorry.
Hi, Will.
There's nothing to read.
Nothing to read, so. So do we have a motion to approve?
There's a motion to approve.
Okay, official second. Discussion, go ahead.
Sorry. As you know, we have the ARPA plan, and this is just updating it. Again, you can see the contingency number in red down there of 182,000 after this approval.
Any questions? All right, hearing none, we will call the vote. Green to approve, red to disapprove. Whenever you're ready.
18 yes, zero no.
Okay. Amendment passes. Okay, number three, Resolution 2723.
Resolution to clarify the appointment of the trustee for the Chippewa County Medical Reimbursement Trust. Now therefore be it resolved that the county board has deemed and approved the position of the county administrator as a trustee of the trust unless otherwise specified in writing, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Later motions.
Is there a second? Paul, seconds. Discussion.
This trust was set up in 2004. It was by an individual, whoever the county administrator was at the time. When you change over, that causes some issues because you got to redo everything. And so this is really, you approving that the county administrator position is the trustee instead of the person that's in that position.
Any questions? Hearing none, then I will call the vote. Those in favor, press green. Disapprove, red. Ready.
18 yes, zero no.
Okay, resolution passes. Number four, ordinance to amend chapter 22. This will be the second reading, so we will be voting on this.
Yep. So we went over this pretty extensively. She doesn't read anything.
You don't need to read it again.
So we went over this pretty extensively. There wasn't any questions or clarifying that the county board asked, unless you have something and answer it. No, but nothing's changed.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Erickson will make that motion.
Is there a second?
Tootaburger will say.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will call the vote. Green to approve, red to disapprove.
Motion passes, 18 yes, zero no.
Item number nine, county board chair appointments, Nortech Committee. It's the time that these assignments come up, so putting the same people on. I think we added Paul Kremenauer, who is new, who is the chairman of the ATV Council. So I would seek a motion to approve the appointment.
There's a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Later, a second, Pat.
Any discussion? Call the vote. Green to approve, red to disapprove. Hit your button there.
Motion passes, 18 yes, zero no.
Okay. Any agenda items for future consideration? Get them to me, and then we'll set for the agenda. Otherwise, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Erickson will make that motion.
Is there a second? Green to approve. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.